Let the record reflect. All board members are present. We are also joined by Mr. Heather Campbell, our Board Clerk, Mr. Paul Sotarella, our interim Assistant Superintendent for Human Relations, our Business Office Director, Mr. Teresa Solvi, and our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Castaldo, Dr. Lisa Castaldo. The Chair would like to entertain a motion to go into Executive Session for the following purposes. One, discussing with the Acting Superintendent of Schools, interim Assistant of Human Resources, and Board Legal Counsel for Labor Relations and Personnel Matters updates regarding collective bargaining with the Suffolk Administrative Support Association and Rapid Custodial and Maintenance Organization. Two, receiving legal counsel from the Board of Education, Counsel for Labor Relations and Personnel Matters. Three, discussing with the Board of Education, Counsel for Labor Relations and Personnel Matters, and appeal to the Commissioner of Education, Adams versus DeGame, McKenzie, Karen, Domally, Kern, Reamer, and Shapiro. Four, discussing the employment history of two particular firms. Motion? Mr. McKenzie, second. I'm sorry, who was that? Shapiro, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any opinions? None. Move. Thank you. In special meeting on March 11th, 2019. Let the record reflect. All board members are present. We're also accompanied by our Board Clerk, Heather Campbell, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mr. Paul Sotarella, our Director of Business, Ms. Teresa Solvi, and our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Ms. Lee Weber. We're also accompanied by our Acting Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Castaldo. Please rise for the bench. Next is Acting Superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. How are you all? Right, it's been amazing weekend for Suffolk athletes and I just wanted to speak about that a little. The Suffolk hockey team traveled to Buffalo to compete for the state title. I got to watch both games. It was really nice. You can watch it on an app. It was fabulous. Unfortunately, they weren't victorious in that last game, but they were second in the state. Lots of the players did really, really well. In Syracuse, the Section 1 boys' bowling team took home the state title and had come from behind with by a mere 49 pins. Tommy Chamberlain was a huge contributor to that win. And he finished second overall in competition, which is just 16 pins behind the winner. He recorded the second highest total pin score, rolling a 1362 series and an average of 227 for the day. In the girls' division, Megan Dubrinsky, sorry if I missed that one, recorded the highest single game score of 288 out of 70. All section girls competed. At the Nude Balance Indoor Track and Field Nationals Tournament held this weekend in Manhattan, Suffolk's Mary Henley clocked a personal best. Her 4 minute 58.82 placed her 19th in the girls' championship mile. The Suffolk girls' sprint medley relay comprised of Sarah Galvin, Monal DeTero, DeTerio, I'm sorry, Annalise Ben, and Mary Henley took 5th place in the Nationals. Last week, we had 19 Suffolk high school students attending the DECA States Competition. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Five of our students were state winners, placing them in the top 10 of their group. And Maddie Nippon, our BOE student rep, placed 5th overall. And qualified for Nationals. Congrats to Maddie, Sophie Park, Emily Ullman, Chloe Barbenell, and Charlie Gullows. Finally, in athletics sports, Junior Gina Zarcombe won first place in the beginner freestyle competition for twirling at the 2019 State Tournament. And that was helping Florida, Orlando, Florida. In theater, RFP Connors had a wonderful performance of Willy Walk in the Chocolate Factory that everyone loved. And this weekend is the Suffolk middle school performance of Finlar on the Roof. So I encourage everyone to attend. Thursday, Friday. Oh, sorry, sorry. It's Annie. You're right. Got that one wrong. I encourage everyone to try to attend Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Castaldo, for this great report. And congratulations to all Suffolk athletes for your incredible records. We're very proud of all of you. At this time, I'd like to, the Chair would like to ask for a motion to read a statement based on a board statement, Board of Education statement. And I need a motion.
Move.
Mr. McKenzie, second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Mr. Domally and Mr. Turn. Any opinions? Any opinions? Mr. Shapiro, what was your vote? I didn't hear you.
My vote was aye.
I will read the statement. On behalf of the Board of Education, ask for this vote. I apologize, what?
Put the laptop down so we can see.
Any other questions, please? Some of the members of the Board have expressed personal opinions regarding the events surrounding the suspension of Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Douglas Adams. Now, at the direction of the Board of Education, I make the following statement on behalf of the Board. It is essential to the mission of the district to assure the safety and well-being of our students. The Board of Education relies upon the district's chief executive officer, the Superintendent of Schools, to review all situations in which students are exposed to inappropriate conduct that may affect their educational experience, whether in academics, athletics, or extracurricular settings. Over the past several weeks, the Board sought to meet with Superintendent Adams to address these matters. He was unavailable to be present for executive sessions, to be given the opportunity to explain why the Board had been kept in the dark and why personnel matters were not addressed in light of the gravity of the situation. The Superintendent's suspension upon certain charges issued to him were not in response to his two appeals to the Commissioner, but rather addressed those matters that the Board sought to meet with him weeks ago. During this school year, we have repeatedly asked for information necessary for board members to carry out their fiduciary duties as trustees in area of finance, and we did not receive the information that we requested that was necessary for informed consideration and action. The Suffolk Central School District needs a cohesive governance, a cohesive governance team in place in the interest of all students, taxpayers, and the school community. We ask the Acting Superintendent, Dr. Castaldo, to be given everyone's full cooperation in her effort to serve the district. Thank you. Public participation. Sorry. Public participation. And I will read the policy to remind everyone who has not joined us at previous meetings of what the policy states. This is Policy 1230, Public Participation at Board Meetings. This is the first segment for public participation, and this one is on action items only. Each segment of public participation cannot exceed 30 minutes and shall be set aside during this first section on agenda items and later in the agenda on non-agenda items. Persons wishing to address the Board will approach the podium, the podium is right here, and state their name, address, and school, community affiliation. Any group or organization wishing to address the Board[687.63][687.63](Applause) shall state the name of their organization and name of community. Presentation should be as brief as possible. No speaker will be permitted to speak for longer than three minutes, and we will follow the three minutes so that as many people as possible can speak. Our timekeeper is our Board Clerk right there, who will alert the President to the three-minute time as well as the total time of 30 minutes. Speakers may comment on any matter related to district business. The Board will not permit in public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, we're not going to do that. Statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons making presentations at the Board meeting need to address their remarks to the President and shall not direct questions or comments to board members or any district officials. The President shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and shall rule on such matters as the time to be allowed for public discussion and appropriateness of the subject being presented. The President shall have the right to discontinue any presentation which violates this policy. The first segment is regarding action items only that are being acted on today. So be sure that your comments are related to actions the Board is scheduled to act upon. Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Bogan. I'm a junior at Suffolk High School. But more importantly, an active member of the community. Throughout my years as a student at Suffolk, I've been granted amazing educational opportunities and amazing programs which I cherish deeply. However, the current situation concerning the Board and Superintendent Dr. Douglas Adams needs to be explained. From what we know, which is not much, this does not support the best interest of the community. My classmates and I are here tonight in support of our schools, our community, and Superintendent, who is nothing but supportive of our many programs, but also a great leader to supervise such high-performing schools. At the last Special Board of Education meeting on March 5, Dr. Adams was suspended without a reason given to the public. Instead of informing the public on the issue, the public was told after a long wait not to mention undisclosed executive session that the new Acting Superintendent would be put in place and that Suffolk Central would pay for Dr. DeGame's legal fees. Suffolk Central is known to be an elite, high-performing district in the eyes of many, including teachers and staff. Hold on. Not to mention, I'm, sorry. Giving to the public instead of, okay. Suffolk Central is known to be an elite, high-performing district in the eyes of many, including everyone in this auditorium tonight. Dr. Adams led the charge along with amazing teachers and staff. From the outside in, it seems like there's a hidden agenda. The core case, Adams versus DeGame, is costing taxpayers thousands of unnecessary dollars. Acting Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Castaldo, claims that this transition students will be the first priority. Suffolk Central students always felt that we were the first priority until the last election. A consistent four-to-three divide has been occurring recently on the Board, and many of the actions taking place are not in the best interest of the community or the students like myself. Rather, it seems that they are in the best interest of the outside influences. These are the actions of a power-courting Board who tries to silence any discontent from community members, or in this case, from Dr. Adams. Thus, the actions of the school Board over the last year are very concerning to the student body in Suffolk Central. You are the acting parents of the district and should act appropriately. We, the student body and community, are the children of the district, and when there's a dysfunctional household, there's a dysfunctional children. The Board should not be permitted to make such drastic actions without any transparency leaving the public in the dark on many issues, especially in cases where it can affect the students. In bed, two seats are up for election. I'm positive that the community members will vote in favor of the candidates that want to see Suffolk Central thrive, not succumb to the politics of such fundamental issues, to protect and educate the whole child. The Board is simply wasting time, money, and effort while harshly ripping the children apart in this family. I'm pretty sure that every single person in this room wants our school district and community to thrive. I ask the Board tonight how your actions over the past year have put kids first.
Any, the first, thank you for your remarks, first of all. We appreciate them. And the first segment of public participation needs to be on action items only. There are five action items on this agenda. So if it's not related to the five action items, it will be in the second public participation. The agenda is online, and I will read the items for you. There are five action items on the agenda, so please address your comments regarding those action items, and then we will have open public participation right after that. Number one is RFP General Counsel. Two is RFP Architect. Three is RFP Forensic Audit. Four is Appointment Defense Counsel in Commissioners Appeal. Five is Appointment Alternate General Counsel. These are actions. So if you're, hold back, please. If you have comments regarding any of those actions, please proceed.
My name is Susan Delaney. I'm a parent of three students in Suffolk School, and I'm a teacher at Suffolk High School. Last week, the Board of Education shocked the public by voting to suspend our Superintendent of Schools. It is my understanding that personnel issues due to their private nature are not revealed by the district. I understand this, and while I, like many people here, wonder about what led up to the suspension, we will never get that answer. We can only trust that things will play out as they should. Tonight, I'm here to ask the Board and the public to reexamine factual events that have occurred in public at the meeting.
I have to draw. We're going to start with you in the second segment because it's not related to action items.
It is. In July 2018, at the first meeting of our current Board, new members requested district cell phones. At that time, the district's policy did not allow for board members to have phones paid for by the district. Fast forward to February 2019, that policy has now been changed. Board members may request the district paid for. In late summer, after Steve Walker resigned, Dr. Joe Lloyd, the sitting principal at Scholesburg Elementary School, was recommended to take over as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. At that time, Dr. Lloyd, a well-revarded member of our leadership team, was voted down by the Board of Ed. Board members claimed it wasn't personal, but that the process of hiring Dr. Lloyd had been flawed. We are now on our third Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources since Dr. Lloyd's rejection, and please note, Mr. Souchelle leaving us at the end of the month. In December 2018, an RFP for a special engagement audit appeared on special meeting agenda. In subsequent meetings, this RFP was consistently referred to as a forensic audit. On February 5, the President of the Board made a point to call out her fellow board members for calling the special audit engagement a forensic audit. She explained that all board members were using the terms interchangeably. She emphatically stated the RFP was not a forensic audit. Take a look at tonight's agenda. The Board of Education is literally voting on a forensic audit. Throughout the last few months, the Board has voted to hire an additional lawyer to handle personnel matters and labor relations. They have voted for a Bosse's closer agreement for an unspecified investigation. Neither of these actions were precipitated by discussion. They appeared, were voted on, and were passed, all at cost to the taxpayers. In education, the standard operating procedure is for district staff to make recommendations to the Board of Education for goods, services, and programs that will benefit students. At no time had Dr. Adams recommended any of these steps to the Board of Ed. Mr. Kishara, our business official, who resigned a little over a week ago, never recommended an audit. No staff member ever uttered a need for the unknown Bosse's closer. Board of Ed members are now the experts. You are to oversee what is brought in front of you. This is sold for a reason.
Please come through. Thank you.
Our business office makes recommendations regarding our finances. The curriculum office makes recommendations regarding what our students learn on a daily basis.
We will not, we will not allow people to continue each other's speeches. Please have your own. Hold on one second. Sorry, I don't time you yet. We need everybody to have an opportunity, so please have your own speech and your own words.
BOE members are not the experts.
I'm sorry. Please identify yourself first.
My name is Colleen Nandjana. I'm a teacher at Suffolk High School. I'm also a one-by-one.
BOE members are not the experts. You are to oversee what is brought in front of you. This is done so for a reason. Our business office makes recommendations regarding our finances. The curriculum office makes recommendations regarding what our students learn on a daily basis. The technology department makes IT recommendations. This occurs so that people on the ground report up the ladder the needs of the district. Then the BOE determines if they feel the recommendation is legitimate or not, if it's worth the burden on the taxpayer. This current Board has consistently voted on action items that were not recommended by district staff. Please return to form before too much damage is done. The system ensures that no one with a personal agenda has too much sway over any particular situation. If the Board is a body initiating a purchase, a contract, or a program, who is the objective observer who looks at the endeavor and decides its merit?
Seeing there are no further comments, we will proceed to the next segment of our agenda. The Chair would like to entertain consent agenda unless board members would like to pull out any of the other. 2.03. Is your mic working? Ms. Reamer? Any other items?
Yeah, I, I, go. I was going to say that we should probably just go through one by one because I have comments on several, and I think other people probably could.
Are you pulling all other items?
I mean, just the, just to try to be simple.
Item one, I'm sorry, 2.01, RFP General Counsel. The Chair would like to entertain a motion. Second. Discussion.
All right, so I'll start now. Unfortunately, I don't have copies of the resolutions. So, I don't know if you want to read, they're not on, no, they're not on your campus. So if you want to read them, or I can if you want to pass it over.
Okay, just for the record, all resolutions have been shared, and they're posted online before the myup.
So we are 2.01. Being resolved, the Board of Education hereby directs Acting Superintendent of Schools to cause the preparation and issuing of a request for proposals for General Counsel to the district exclusive of special education, labor relations, and personnel services. So my, my only question, because I wasn't part of putting this resolution together, would be why we are, and I don't mean any disrespect to any attorneys that are in the room, why we are putting this out exclusive of special education, labor relationships, and personnel.
Okay, so if you recall, this, this has been something that we're working, you can hold on to it. Since the fall, we requested that the administration provide the school Board at the reorg meeting when we renewed different consultants that the Board already has contracts with. We requested to check if any of the contracts were stale at the time. Eventually, we received the contracts that were shared with all of us, all board members. And these two particular ones, Action 2.01 and 2.02, happened to be stale contracts that we were advised had expired. In addition, so that's to address the first part, why those two today, they're expired contracts already for some time. Second, excluding certain services because those are current contracts. So they're, we are in a current agreement that is current that we should not be breaking. So is everything else except?
So, and I mean, I haven't looked over the terms of the agreement, but the current agreement is a contract for those services.
Okay, I know that it's current because we just voted on it December 13, and the purpose of that contract is still ongoing, so it hasn't expired.
I mean, I would just think that going forward, if we're going to put an RFP General Counsel, it'd be all comps, right? I mean, that would be probably the best thing for the Board and the best thing for the district.
This particular one is going to exclude special education. We've always had two attorneys.
Special education, I agree, yes.
And the labor relations were something that our current, our current General Counsel did not want to engage in. Neither that nor the personnel matter that necessitated the action.
I, well, I think that's a matter of opinion. But, okay, that's fine.
That's the information to receive.
I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Yeah, go on.
Okay, if, if, I hate using these. Can you hear me in the back?[1721.61][1721.61](Laughter) Yes or no?[1724.56][1724.56](Laughter) Okay, great. Okay, so I, I just want to know, if a contract is stale, can the contract be rolled over by the district if there's an agreement between the district?[1736.82][1736.82](Laughter) Can, can you hear me now?[1744.21][1744.21](Laughter) Do you want to hear me?[1746.21][1746.21](Laughter) Okay, so if, if there is a stale contract, can the district, if it's in coordination with the particular firm or person or whatever, can the contract be rolled over if both sides agree to?
So what I was informed with when we looked into this particular first contract was that it was stale for so long that it doesn't apply to the current situation, and I don't know that it even exists. Nobody could actually provide it. So it was never posted among the ones that we ended up having access to. It was that old. So, I, I, I couldn't tell you because we weren't privy to the actual old contract. Sure. Any further questions? Okay. At this point... At this point, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay, whose name? Mr. Donlin?
Aye.
Mr. Curran? Mr. Shapiro? Any abstentions? Okay, 2.01 is moved. 2.02, the Chair would like to entertain a motion to adopt 2.02, RFP Architect. Same circumstances, a stale contract as well.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry. Motion on the floor, please. Anyone?
Yeah.
Mr. Shapiro, second. Mr. Curran, discussion.
Okay, so is this particular contract also ancient, or is this just like, it ended up not being renewed as of, within the last three months, or six, six months, or whatever?
Not months, for sure, but perhaps Ms. Isoli can help us with that?
(inaudible).
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so not months, as far as I know, not months. Possibly years, but the architect, um...
Contract with the architect, it's, it's been, we've told that it's stale. How stale is it, is it from?
(inaudible).
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, back in, back in, back in. Do we need a second grader to help us?
(audience laughing)
Now we have to talk.
Okay. Um, you know, I don't know that the answer off the top of my head, obviously it wasn't for, I didn't even know exactly what was going on the agenda, but it has been several years, no doubt. Many of our contracts get rolled over if we don't feel the need to go out for, for an RFP. It's, you know, we usually approve a lot, most of these roll over contracts in July of the reorg meeting.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Yes, the, the recommendation to put this RFP out, obviously it'd come from the administration. It's like an RFP General, it is one that's come directly from the Board.
The RFP itself will be handled by?
The RFP will be handled, I'm saying, the request for the RFP.
And it'll probably mimic exactly what was put out before, so they have probably old versions somewhere. The request was a board request, because Board members were concerned about stale contracts.
So, and I, and I understand the stale contract discussion, but is there urgency as far as the architect goes to be doing this tonight?
The item was on the March 5th agenda, that was discussed and activated, so this is a second time.
So nine, six days ago, what? Is it, is it, again, is there urgency for the architect RFP?
Does it need to be an urgency to act on?
I'm asking if there's urgency.
There's, yeah, it's time sensitive to have current contracts.
I mean, I don't want to call this right now. Any issues, or complaints, or any, anything with the existing architect as we know it right now? And again, I'm not implying that we shouldn't put an RFP out, but to, to put it out in the middle of March, I mean, typically these types of things are done at the reorg, when you go through, yeah, when you go through these RFPs, but again, that's why I'm asking the question.
So to clarify, at the reorg, you reappoint consultants? You don't necessarily contract with them at the reorg? At the reorg, you renew their, their appointment, it's a, it's a reappointment, but the contract is something done anytime of the year. It doesn't have to wait till August.
But as far as you...
And I have no complaints at all.
There's no outstanding...
Not that I know of. Nobody has brought anything to our attention, Ms. Isoli might have more.
Um, no, we've been working with Clark Patterson forever, they're actually very, very good, highly recommended, and they're used by many, many districts throughout the state. Also, they, they actually work with us a lot, and we ask them for, you know, information, they'll give it to us and spend some time, and not charge us anything for it, just because they've been working, that's how they work within the state, so absolutely no complaint.
And all existing contractors are welcome to submit their proposals, and, you know, there's no indication that they should be replaced, but the contract should be current.
Just 'cause the contracts don't, or the RFPs don't have, doesn't mean that the person who's currently under contract is gonna be removed, certainly. Of course, it's just a refreshment, oh, that's all it is.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Mr. Donlin, any others? Mr. Curran, and Mr. Shapiro?
Abstaining.
Abstaining.
Two abstentions. Who? Item 2.03, RFP Forensic Audit, motion?
Move.
Ms. Reamer, second.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie, discussion.
Yeah, so I'm gonna read this resolution. Being resolved, the Board of Education hereby directs Acting Superintendent of Schools to cause the preparation and issuance of a request for proposals for a forensic audit of the District's finances and business operations. I have to say notes here that one of our speakers had, which was, you know, the last few months, we've been discussing and voting on special engagement audit. And at the February 5th meeting, there was discussion among the Board members, the terms forensic would be by several of you, and President did make clear that we were not, at that time, voting on a forensic audit. So, again, because these conversations haven't been had with the whole Board, I'd like to know why all of a sudden we're doing an RFP for a forensic audit? Why we've gone away from special engagement audit, and now moved into a true forensic audit?
Okay, so just to clarify, it was, the way that first RFP was posted online, and it is online for anyone to review it, it did not state forensic audit, and it had five or six items that were specifically required, and they were stated, and they're still online, I've mentioned that before, and therefore, I corrected my teleboard numbers in order to make sure there's no confusion, that was not a forensic audit, that was posted. Everybody's clear that that motion passed, an appointment was hopefully going to happen, and the one proposal received was withdrawn by the person elected at that meeting, February 5th. So that would have required either a repost of the same thing, which we had posted twice, or not reposting the same thing. So that, that ended there. Subsequent to that, I received a request from a Board member to have an extra forensic audit. So to clarify also the member of the public who spoke, this is a new request.
And that sort of request also...
Exactly, that adds to, and I'm glad you asked it, thank you, adds to what was previously required, and I'm gonna let my colleague, Ms. Reamer, speak to that.
I have always wanted a forensic audit, from before I was elected. When you were voted onto a Board with $140 million budget or so, last year it was $130, you would always, I would always recommend it's CPA getting a forensic audit. I think it's the most transparent thing that you could do on a Board, and as a school district, is to show that everything is above board, and there's nothing being hidden. I can't imagine why anybody wouldn't wanna have a forensic audit to make sure that everything is above board.
Also, as a Board member, we have received complaints from community members about field usage, about entities that were supposed to be charged for utilizing fields that were not charged for utilizing fields, for whatever reason. I'm a member of the PTA at Cherry Lane Elementary School, and there was money given to Cherry Lane from an Assembly member that was re-appropriated to other projects, and as a result of that, we feel as though it's, it's a good idea to look into those matters. I mean, we should definitely find out the answers as to why those things happen. When you do a forensic audit, they dig into matters like that. They'll find out why exactly those things happen, and that's the reason why we feel as though it's important to have one of the reasons.
I'm just gonna add to my colleague's comments that this type of audit, should the resolution pass, would include everything that was in the original RFP plus more, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary then to put another one out. It would be inclusive and in addition to. Any further comments?
Yes?
Yes.
We have an internal order? We have an external order? And between those two audits, we still believe that there is an issue. That's what I'm assuming.
So, I'm not assuming anything, but when requested to the internal and external auditors, they explain that they don't perform this type of work. Even what was posted at the original RFP, for special auditor, both.
Yeah, what about, that was the external as well?
Yeah, yeah, we made sure before we posted it the first time. Put your mic on.
Can you hear me?
No.
Is it on? Can you hear me? What I was saying is that the external auditor only does certain things, they don't cover this type of work, as well as the, the internal auditor. We tell the internal auditor at the beginning of the school year, when we're doing the reorg meeting, what we want them to focus on. So both of these, internal and external, will not audit these certain things that we wanna have done. It gives the taxpayers just comfort in everything. I mean, I'm not expecting to see anything that's, that's horrific, but it just gives everybody a feeling of completeness, and transparency, and openness, and you wanna make sure that that's done. I mean, we're here to protect the taxpayers, that's why I'm here, to protect children and the taxpayers. So that's exactly what I'm doing, you guys entrusted me to do that. Okay.
And honestly, when you assume community complaints, people that live here are saying, "This is wrong, we would like you to look into this." You have a responsibility. Those people pay taxes the same way that those that don't agree with this audit. You know, if people are saying to you, "We would like for you to look into this," and it's not just one person, it's several people, then you look into it. If it doesn't harm anything to go out and look at something and audit it, granted it does cost money, I'll give you that, but it doesn't hurt the, the cost of, we have to find out, that's what the RFP is about.
The business office will put together.
When the RFP goes out, when the RFP goes out, people submit their proposals. As a result, we as a Board decide, is that okay? Is that, the business office goes ahead and looks at it, everybody weighs in on it, and we decide who's gonna be chosen for the job. So it doesn't necessarily have to be the lowest paid one, it's a professional service. Whomever does, we do decide on who's gonna do it, so we don't know what the price even is now. We have to find that out.
I think an RFP out does not also guarantee that there will be a contract, the previous RFP did not amount into a contract, so all those decisions will be made in conjunction with the administration, the business office, and probably some. Any further discussion? Seeing there is none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Could you put the laptop back down? Yeah. (audience cheering) Okay, item 2.04.
Laptop, yeah.
I will put the laptop down when I can, gladly, when I'm listening to the audience, so please stop. Item 2.04. Appointment, Defense Council, and Commissioners of PL. Ms. Reamer, second.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie, any discussion?
Everything was getting close. You asked for it. Yeah, but I can't, I can't vote on two, three, and five, you're intent, then you still gotta vote for four independently anyway. That's, that's all, and that was probably the logical thing.
Any discussion? Nobody? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Items moved. Item 2.05. Appointment, alternate General Counsel. Motion?
Move.
Mr. McKenzie, second.
Second.
Mr. Curran, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Um, we did speak briefly about this before, and, and while I do understand what we are trying to accomplish, I, I would like to table this action item possibly to the next meeting, just so we could maybe develop more of a plan for how we would handle situations as they arise, that's, that's all. Like to have a little more clarity in the, in the appointment. I, I understand, I just, as far as the resolution is concerned, and what we're actually voting on and putting out officially, no, I, no, I don't either. Um, I just think we should put a little more verbiage into lay out some, go around with that, that's all.
Um, so my response to that is, it's time sensitive, because there could be any, any income. Yeah. And, and we ran into, yeah, so we ran into a situation where we had to hold special meetings quickly in order to make these appointments specific to actions taken by other parties, and so both attorneys advised that it would provide the flexibility to not need a quick meeting and a vote every time.
And that's, again, I'm, I'm...
And that could be, that could be tomorrow.
I think we should, but I think some type of language that flexes both of our attorneys, communicate with each other, is important to have in the resolution.
They've done that very well, actually.
Right, but I think that's, to have in the resolution, that's all, that's all. So, again, if we can wait another eight days, because we have another meeting next Tuesday, and hey, we may have another special meeting this week, or until Monday, so...
(audience cheering)
Hello? I'd rather not have any special meetings. Um, this was requested by two different attorneys, and those attorneys always work together, um, so both of them asked us to pass this resolution. This is not something that came from a Board member, you know, like a forensic audit, this is something that was requested by the attorneys.
So my comment is, if the attorneys have been working so well together, what's eight more days?
Eight.
That we can sit down and...
Because something would come up.
The language is drafted by the attorney. The current language is drafted by the attorney, not by the Board members. Any further discussion?
Also, the, there could be something of legal nature within the next eight days that was, that one of our attorneys who's already indicated that he is not comfortable with certain situations, may have to act on. That's the reason why this has to happen today, and we've already discussed this.
So Shapiro, Mr. Curran, say anything? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
Nay.
Nay. (audience cheering)
This was requested by two different attorneys, and those attorneys always work together. So both of them asked us to pass this resolution. This is not something that came from a board member, you know, like a forensic audit. This is something that was requested by the attorneys.
So my comment is, if the attorneys have been working so well together, what's eight more days?
Eight.
Because something would come up.
The language is drafted by the attorney. The current language is drafted by the attorney, not by the board members. Any further discussion?
Also, there could be something of legal nature within the next eight days that was that one of our attorneys, who's already indicated that he is not comfortable with certain situations, may have to act on. That's the reason why this has to happen today. And we've already discussed this.
So Shakira, Mr. Karen, say anything? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay. We have to get this right. Nay is Mr. Dolly Shapiro, correct?
Yes.
Epstein is Mr. Furman. Move, thank you. Board members' comments? This is a new segment of the agenda that is starting today for the first time. This is an outcome of a policy update. Gonna remind everybody?
Madam President?
Hold on.
I have a statement to make.
Please hold on. This is according to an update that took place on March 5th on policy number 2350. Adding board member comments. With some limitations, just like the ones we give to the public, board member comments are limited to three minutes, so Ms. Campbell will time you. And cannot reference either a particular member of the staff or individual students. And we can go in one order, and the next time go in the reverse order, whatever order you like. Mr. Karen, please go ahead, and Ms. Campbell will time.
May I? Okay. Seems that some people in the audience and the community haven't yet realized that the election is over. Let me repeat that. It is over. To paraphrase the prophet Isaiah, "It's time to beat the swords into plowshares and the spears into pruning hooks." As an educator for over 50 years, and someone who has always believed in civility, I'm shocked and dismayed to see professional people coming to the podium and constantly attacking the board, and particularly making derogatory and personal attacks upon president and school board without foundation or fact. Some speakers have also made remarks that the current board is not following policy or procedures, and questioning the legality of our decisions. However, everyone should be aware that the Suffolk Central School Board has a board attorney who sits with us at executive board meetings and gives his professional advice regarding our discussions and development of procedural, policy, and legal questions. If this board were not operating in the best interest of the school district, the school attorney would have a legal obligation to make us aware and guide us to the correct decision. Just because we may do something differently from the previous board, it doesn't mean that they are incorrect or nefarious. I'm shocked and saddened to be discussing the wrongful conduct of a district pedagogical employee. None of us on this board want to be here at this juncture or tonight. However, the school board not only has a judiciary responsibility to the community, but also a legal and moral responsibility to safeguard the safety and security of all students in our schools. We as a board should not take this responsibility lightly, and when issues are brought to the school board pertaining to incidents involving students and the inaction of those in leadership positions to deal with those situations, it was time to act and ask that a hearing take place to resolve these issues. And that's why I voted for the suspension of an employee. If there seems to be smoke, let's check to make sure there is no fire. The Suffolk School Board acts as a grand jury, which only hears the evidence, and if it is sufficient and strong enough to warrant further investigation, a suspension is warranted, followed by a hearing of lawyers outside the district to determine the guilt or innocence to the charges. I would invite all those people who came to the podium tonight, the audience and the entire community, to please return to the board meeting after the hearing has taken place, and you now have knowledge of the hearing decision. And then come back and look every single board member in the eye, and ask them why they voted to suspend or not suspend an employee as soon as smoke was detected. The truth and facts will set all of us free. It is in the interest of the community members to allow legal procedures to be taken.
Please stop. Mr. Karen finally concludes your remarks. You may conclude. You may conclude. Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
I got a text to keep this closer to me, so I'm gonna keep it closer. I want to thank the acting superintendent for her words about the students. There's two words that always come into my mind when I think of Suffolk High, which I was lucky enough to spend a year at four years ago, and the two words are Mountie pride. I want all of you... I want all of you to realize how proud as a board we are of all of your accomplishments. And you don't have to be a winner to be considered a winner. You compete. Not everyone competes. Some people, for whatever reason, don't. Whatever team you're on, whatever robotics team, whatever athletic team, whether you're in DECA, it doesn't matter. What track team you're on, baseball, soccer, lacrosse... We do play lacrosse here, don't we? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Just know the fact that you're out there and that you're giving it your all, that says a lot about Mountie pride. And I want to congratulate all of the students of all of their accomplishments into the class of 2019, believe it or not, in about, let's see, this is March, April, May, June. So just in about three months and about 10 days, we're gonna wish you a very happy goodbye. I would just like to... I just want to thank you all for being here tonight. And I ask you really to keep in mind what's going on here, and I hope you continue coming to the meetings, and we'll get a resolve here.
Any additional comments?
I would just like to speak a little bit to the special meetings that people are commenting on, and quite honestly, that I am sick of coming to. We have a lot of these special meetings because of the fact that we can't, as a board, seem to get things that need to be discussed amongst us on the agenda. The agenda is posted by the administration. The previous superintendent went ahead and said to us, "This is my agenda. I'm the one that controls this." We cannot get things onto the belief, and this is the reason why we have to have special meetings and discuss. I said some months ago to Mr. Carney, when he came up to the mic and spoke, that I thought this was healthy. And the reason why I said it's healthy is look around you. Now, all of a sudden, people are coming to meetings. Kids are here from the schools. Staff members are here. Family members are here. People that don't even have kids in the schools are here. At the meetings, pride, you would have Mrs. Veltini in the front, crocheting or whatever she's, I don't know what you call what she does, sewing or knitting or whatever she does there. She was one of the few people that was there, but she's been right where she is the entire time. Now everybody's here and listening and paying attention to what's going on, and that's important. This is your community, your schools. You should be taking pride in this and making sure that what goes on is right. I welcome people to come to these meetings.
I just want to say that we were presented with information at executive session that's not available to the public. There's only one individual that can share that information with you. We cannot. I wish we could, but we can't. I just want to say that I heard some things, and I don't know if you guys ever heard the saying, "See something, say something," but there are people who are working in the school district, parents, other students, who have seen something and didn't say anything. And I think that is part of the problem. I want it to be a very open communication. If you think that there's something that the board should know, or that the administration should know, then you should send us something. You know, send us an email, let us know what's going on. We don't know. You know, there are certain things that we weren't told. I have never followed a crowd or done what is popular. I do what I feel is right, and I think I've proven that over the years. I can tell you that if I feel a certain way, no matter where I am, I stick to my convictions, and I always will. Lastly, I'm an elected official, and I was entrusted by the voters of this district to protect the children and the taxpayers, and that is exactly what I am doing.
I'll be brief. I just want to address quickly the statement that was given earlier, and my desire for the, I hate sitting like this. My desire for the public to know what's happening. And a statement is deserved by everybody in this room to the best of our ability to give it to you. And like many others up here have said, there's a lot of information that simply cannot be shared because it's confidential or it's executive, and I believe that the statement that we gave was the wrong statement to give. I think that it could have been done in a more, I didn't prepare my statements because I didn't know what this was gonna say until I got here, so...
Hey, you're the boss, Chan.
I didn't like the public statement. So, anyway, I just want to be clear that while everybody here deserves to know everything that they possibly can, I simply was not in favor of the wording in this statement that was read tonight.
Okay, as a courtesy, I choose to stay till the end, and I will feedback on Mr. Shapiro's positive notes and Dr. Castaldo's. I'd like to congratulate all our athletes that we recognized today and those who didn't, who have been working all year very hard, including giving up their free time and their summers, representing Suffolk Central School District to the best of your ability. We're all very proud of you, extremely proud of you. But as a hockey mom, I want to give a special shout-out to the Suffolk hockey team. We're very proud of your performance throughout the season and to the point that we reached, winning your semifinal, coming back from being down three goals. I know how difficult that was. And winning a game eight-three. So, very proud of you. And it took my son's team three attempts in a row to win the state championship in 2012, and I believe and I know that you can. So go Suffolk, go Mountie. Public participation on non-agenda items. The same rules we ran before apply, three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the board president. Please state your name, excuse me, state your name, your street address, and your affiliation with the district.
My name is Paul Diamond. I have two children come through the district. I live in Suffolk. I have watched with dismay for the last eight months as this new Board of Education has created utter turmoil in the Suffolk Central School District. Though campaigning on a promise of kids-first, newly-elected members of the Board of Education, along with the current board president, clearly have another agenda, one far more petty, personal, and worse, destructive. Let's consider and tick off some of your accomplishments of the last eight months. Deep in the rift among the Board of Education is evidenced by the steady, polite, regular four-three votes on district business. You've hollowed out the offices at Hillburn, including the latest resignation of a very highly qualified business administrator on the eve of the budget season. You've created such conflict in the district that it results in both the board president and Board of Education being served by the superintendent with commissioners' complaints. And then the sudden suspension of the superintendent that has all the appearances of retaliation. A Board of Education so incapable of working with the superintendent that it insists on wasting taxpayer dollars by unnecessarily hiring labor lawyer for negotiations to undermine the superintendent, despite the fact the board previously used a labor lawyer for that very purpose and produced no results. And now, tonight, we've listened to you hiring still two more lawyers on the taxpayer dime. A steady flow of special meetings with little notice to the public. Board agendas, board agendas posted to the last minute, including the one for this evening. If this is putting kids first, I hate to see what putting kids last looks like. Make no mistake, I've got plenty of issues over the years with the lack of transparency in this school district, and surely those are areas that need to be addressed. But using the public trust as board members to sell personal grievances and petty slights is no way to achieve that. And if the kids-first ticket had intended to hollow out the district offices, then it should have been part of the campaign platform. But of course, it wasn't. And if it was, I suspect the election results would have been quite different. Suffolk School District has much to be proud of. We are blessed with wonderful teaching staff, good students, and a wonderful education All we ask of our Board of Education is that you manage to keep the ship sailing straight. But this Board of Education is rudderless and its leadership without a moral compass. And though you might not know the entirety of the residents at the moment, rest assured,
Joaquin Johnson, Aspen Road, Spotsburg, New York. I don't normally speak at these things, however, the comments by a board member here just drove me to respond. As someone that was elected to a board, though an election may have concluded, you're still a public servant. So that means you need to listen to the public, not chastise them, but hear their voices and answer them. Those comments offended me on multiple levels, all right, and I hope they can take that into consideration. As far as the board as a whole, I do think it's very important that you recognize the importance of your fiscal responsibilities as well. And to spend money on audits and attorneys, that's, those are dollars that go directly away from students. And to stay here and say that unequivocally you're for the students, I find it to be very surprising, because nothing was mentioned of the students. There's not a single action item related to curricular matters. And I will just conclude by telling certain board members that you should be careful, because I do believe that the quoting of scripture at a public meeting may be considered an endorsement of religion.
I'm Amy Bloom, Suffolk parent, resident for 20 years. This is the second time I'm speaking at this meeting. The first time on record, I said I was the most embarrassed I'd ever been to be a member of this community, and I stand corrected. It is today. Currently, the New York State Controller is conducting an audit of all district finances at no cost to our district. Do you, as a board...
Do you, as a board, not trust that the controller will do a satisfactory audit? Why are we spending taxpayer money on something the state is already doing? My husband is a certified public accountant for over 20 years. He's worked for big four firms and smaller firms. He has been an auditor. He has told me that a forensic audit is not typically a general audit. It is looking for specific fraud, and that any CPA would know that a regular audit tests everything and can find a specific issue, and then it would need to be tested in more detail. I am not understanding why we just voted on this. Furthermore, I've been at almost every meeting. The RFP was for an audit, never for a forensic audit. If I am wrong, correct me, this is the first time I saw the words forensic audit being used in writing. It had been spoken several times. I myself personally asked why it had been called a forensic audit, and we were sure it was not, which you explained tonight that wasn't. Yet tonight, we voted on something for the first time we've seen on the agenda. Usually, it's the second reading when it's voted on. I agree the election is over. I am also shocked and saddened by the behavior, not of our community, but of our board. Tonight, saying that where there is smoke is fire is 100% correct. You ask us to put forth in the process and of the board, an elected official needs to be held to a higher standard than just a regular community member. You have to have thicker skin. Unfortunately, that's the nature of the job you decided to run for in the election. Tonight, calling out teachers and staff and public, saying, "Who has attended meetings?" I thought we weren't supposed to discuss personnel in public. Then being reprimanded by a board member as to why their opinions and decisions should be agreed with. The same board member who on social media called a community member a caboose, which looking it up means an ass. Unfortunately, there is smoke and there is probably fire. We are putting faith, hoping that the three out of the four board members who have been repeatedly working and showing that they are in the best interest of our community, unfortunately, three out of four isn't gonna do it. Who is left running our district right now? Our superintendent is gone. Our lawyer, apparently gone. Our HR person, gone. Our accountant, business budgeting guy, gone. Who's left running our board? That's all.
My name is Gunnar Marx, and I'm the senior at Suffolk High School. I'm a retired high school sophomore at Suffolk High School. I just wanted to come up here and speak on a topic that everyone is here for, Dr. Adams. He was up with us in Buffalo this weekend, and he supported us all the way. He was at Baruster for the regional game. He was in the locker room every time we won, every time we lost. He really held our backs, and he was there for us all the way, and I just want everyone to know that.
Like Gunnar just said, Dr. Adams is just completely for the kids. You can't hear of another suspended superintendent that drives six hours to Buffalo to cheer on student athletes.
I'll tell you where I was, will you?
Any further comments?
My name is Teresa Davis. I'm a mother of children and grandchildren that have been through this. I personally know Dr. Adams. I know him as a moral patriot, citizen. Okay? For you people to, whoever's involved here, for you to do what you did to him, you know, without us knowing anything, it's a hole. You can see the people. You can see the kids, how much they love him. These are signs. Not right what you're doing, and elections will prove that.
My name is Calista Hestelani. I have two children in the Suffolk school system. I have two questions. One is, for how many of you students that came out tonight to support Dr. Adams also came out to support Dr. Mr. Biddy? I know it's the policy of the board not to answer questions, but I also just wondered, Mr. Kern, you yourself and other board members have been asking for a long time for certain documentation. Mr. Kern, you asked several times for a five-year budget proposal. I'm wondering if we ever see that?
I don't work in the business office, but, oh, sorry. Oh, no, okay, great. I made that, I have made that request. We were given information last year, which I believe if you go and watch the tape, you'll see that I said was inadequate. So, we're gonna see what happens this budget season. Unfortunately, we're gonna be short-staffed, so hopefully we'll get all the information we need.
When we were full staff, did you get the information we needed, though?
Thank you.
Well, my name is Sam Isberg. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. Last year, I remember going door-to-door in Bonner Air campaigning for three candidates for the election last year, and you ran on the ticket saying that you were here to support the kids. And I petitioned for you to get on the board so I could have my cross-country coach back for my last season in Suffolk. But you guys, I know you guys tried for that, but you're running on the same ticket here, saying that you're for the kids, but it doesn't show that you are.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm John Chris Meters from fourth grade. I just want to say, me and my whole class love Dr. Adams. What you're doing is not right. I just want to inform you, what you're doing is a devil walk.
If we're all quiet, we can hear what they're saying. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Jeff Alon. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. I play two sports. I'd first like to address the whole thing about Dr. Adams, like, it's kind of messed up, like, the fact that you took him off the board for, like, a mistake that we made, that he made, and I actually feel like that's not right, because, like, we all humans, we all make mistakes, and that's just how it is. Secondly, I would just like to say, like, that's kind of rude of the, you know, to, like, come at us like that, like, that's just not right to, like, come at, like, the people that you serve, and that's just, like, a way to get yourself kicked out of office, so, like, that's what I mean.
My name's Jonathan Turco. I'm from New York. I just want to let them know, he said he was 17 years old when he carried petitions with two other teammates. Was there an adult with him when he was there? He carried petitions for three people without an adult. Does any of the adult carry?
Do you know that front fact? We can discuss that.
He just said he was 17 with two teammates.
With teammate Taylor.
All right, I just want to know, maybe you guys, considering you said you looked into Community Matters, maybe you guys should look into that?
Seeing there are none, we will close this portion of the meeting. Can I ask you a question? Would you like to speak to the board after, because you already have your turn? All right, go ahead. Please be quiet, so we can hear. Please be quiet, go ahead.
What was your question?
I didn't ask this question. Oh, would you like to speak to the board after the meeting?
Uh, thank you. Last year, when I was campaigning for, like, the three candidates, I was walking around Bonner Air with your pamphlets or whatever, just putting them on people's doorsteps without an adult. I was 17.
Okay, now we really close that section, and we will move on to closing comments of Acting Superintendent Dr. Castillo.
Good evening again. I'm amazed, absolutely amazed and proud of every single person that got up and spoke. It's the backbone of our society that we have civil discourse, that we speak our mind, and that we let our feelings be known, so I'm amazed and proud of every student that got up and spoke. Thank you all for coming, and I hope you do show up at the next board meeting again to let us know your feelings.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Remer, second. Mr. Kenzie, all those in favor, signify a standing aye. All those against, any abstentions, none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for being here.